We have a full agenda and I am aware that there's a very important hockey game that some of us might want to get home to watch. So, we'll get going. Any adjustments to the agenda?
To get to the hockey game, we have to do this meeting in 20 minutes, don't we?
Yeah, they're probably doing the National Anthem now.
Do you have DVR?
I do, but I still want to watch it.
You just get the commercials.
Well, they do have to sing two National Anthems.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Is it the light or is it my thing made in machine?
If I could hear that, I'm really excited.
3.0, Audience and Communications. You ladies got anything or are you just here to watch the presentation?
We're here for the show.
Alright. So, let's go with that. 4.0, sorry, 4.1, kneecap presentation.
Oh, we're up to that already?
Yeah, we're up there already.
Wow, there's no messing around here, right?
I gotta go find Jack out of here.
She's looking for Betsy, her co-presenter.
Okay.
Here we are, we're ready for ya.
I'm sorry!
She's looking for the chat part of the kneecap.
Well, hi. Thanks for having us. Good to see you all again. And you guys as well. So, we're here to talk about assessments, kind of continuing on the vein that Molly set for everyone. So, we're going to start with a slide that most of you have seen before. And this is talking about the fact that in order to have a comprehensive assessment program, you need to have lots of different kinds of assessments. And those different kinds of assessments are kind of compartmentalized into these three main headings. So, we have common local assessments, classroom assessments, and state assessments. And they have very different purposes. Sometimes the data that we get overlaps, but they have very different purposes. And we're going to talk about a little bit about each one of those, how we're using them, what the data we're getting from them are. So, and I did want to say too that the way we use assessments now, the way we give the assessments sometimes, and what we do with the data that we get from assessments, it's very different now than even as little as five years ago. So, it's pretty exciting to see the shift in what we do with the information that we get. So, go ahead and click. So, we're going to focus on classroom performance first, and I'm going to turn it over to Betsy.
Okay. So, I put a lot of things on these slides, and I'm not going to go through each and every piece, watching our time. But if you do have a question on something that you see on a slide and you'd like to know more about it, I certainly can articulate that for you. But the big message that I wanted to share with this slide was, our goal is to provide you with an overall flavor of the types of assessments and record-keeping that help us use our classroom data to inform our instruction for all kids.
Every day.
Every day.
Day to day, so.
And here's a look at our writing data. And again, different types of writing, following Common Core where we have the different text types, again, giving you a sense of how we collect our data. And if you take a look at this slide, this photo chart, a formative assessment, this was happening in a third grade classroom. And the names, of course, are different, but the data is true. If you were a classroom teacher looking at that collection of data, where would you go with your instruction? Where would you focus? Anybody want to chime out a guess?
No one had a conclusion.
Yep. Thinking about some direct instruction on how can we write conclusions at third grade? How can we use transition words, first, second, then, last, and how do we elaborate?
Do you want to talk about the persuasive piece, just a little bit about that one?
Yes, I certainly can. So, this was a sixth grade persuasive writing data that was shared with me. And when the teacher looked really closely, let me review, that A and B are meeting the standard and C is not, and is students who have yet to hand in the piece of writing. And so, when the teacher looked at the 30% who didn't meet the standard, by far, where there was some weakness was in the analysis part. So, when you have to write persuasively, you use facts, you use anecdotes, you use quotes, and the students need to take that information and link it back to their point, and really show, what does this quote show? How does this data make my point stronger? It's that analysis piece that overall was an area that she was noticing in those persuasive writing pieces. And in their journals that they do each and every day, she's bumping up that analysis piece. So, there's that connection. Colleen?
So, I'm just thinking of, you know, the data collection and management of all of that, and this is incredibly useful data on a regular basis. So, are faculty entering data on a regular basis and then being able to see these charts, and then are they able to share with each other so that if one classroom is doing well with analysis and another classroom is doing well with conclusion, they can talk about?
And it depends on the grade level, how that analysis is happening, and whether charts like this are made or not. But I will say that looking at data is happening across the building.
And so, technology's facilitating that?
In some cases, yes. And in some cases, just sitting down and looking at student work and saying, what do we notice? VCAT has definitely helped us with our data collection and analysis. This was out of Jupiter Grades. She just ran the reports out of Jupiter Grades for me, and I just turned them up real quick. Rainforest for grade three, they manually just kept track of where students were. And that's not yet entered on VCAT because that's a more classroom-based assessment.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Some assessments are sort of required to be entered because we're going to look at them in a common way, which we're going to talk about in a few minutes. Some is just classroom teachers taking the initiative and saying, hey, you know, we're all doing this, can we sit down and look at it? So, there's a lot more of that happening. And that's what I was talking about when I said, things are shifting, things are changing, because it makes sense.
And all third grade teachers were using the same rubric that they developed together, using the Lucy Cockens as a framework, so. Move on.
My turn.
So, you've heard me mention Lucy Cockens last year and again this year, that our K4 has really had a big push in professional development around Lucy Cockens. And this is a post-assessment where you take the rubric and you score where the child was. A pre-assessment was also done. And while this third grader is still not where we would really like to see over here completely, that there have been some real shifts from where he was on the post-assessment. And this is very specific about the writer wrote a beginning in which she named a topic, he or she named a topic, and got the interest of the reader. So, it's really specific around instructional practice. By using these rubrics, you can think about, what are my next steps? And again, having all third grade teachers using the same thing is pretty exciting. So, here's first graders writing persuasively as well, again, out of the Lucy Cockens. This is a first grade student who wrote about horses, and I share this student work with you. And then we'd like to show you the video. And as you listen to the video, I'd like you to think about, what do you hear about writing in this video? It's only about two minutes.
Okay. You have to say "I think." You can see it right there, "I think." And then there's the reason. You can see that. I said the first reason right here, and then another reason, and then last word. Actually, just another word for the last thing. And this, because it's not a "I think," it's a "huh." It's a question. Mine is, do you like horses? And then you can do fancy endings on this. It says, "Another 'I think,' and I think now you like all about horses." Would you like to communicate?
Yeah.
It says, "Do you like horses?" I think wasn't a "I think." The first reason is that you can buy horses. Another reason is that they come in different colors, like brown, gray, black, and white. And that we come into the color, that I did this, white, that's the black, red, yellow, and then it says, "Last week, they do tricks and jump balls." Now you like all about horses. I have more here.
What does that student know about writing persuasively?
A lot.
I know when I was in first grade, I didn't even know what elaboration was.
A huh?
Was a huh. So, there's a piece of evidence right there. There's an assessment tool you could use to say, the student understood persuasive writing and is able to articulate it.
It's so powerful. If that is available publicly, you know, if you can get permission to demonstrate an example of what's happening in the school.
I certainly can do that. Right now, it's on private domain, but I certainly can ask and get permission to make it public.
As someone who doesn't have children in the school, I learned so much from that short video.
Yeah. And you can see the instruction that happened when she said that fancy part, because that's what the teacher was using. We will make it fancy. We will make it for an audience.
And to set up the scenario though, you told me something about that child that she's speaking with is not a member of her class, right?
I was gonna say, they're not in the same classroom.
They're not in the same classroom. So, this student's class is a little bit further ahead in terms of persuasive writing than this student's class. So, it was the idea to bring the students together and have an audience for sharing their writing. So, that's a real purpose for writing, is to have an audience, and then with the idea that we learn from our peers. And so, by seeing those wonderful examples. It was just such a wonderful day to be in that room. Well, you see, I get all excited about it.
I am.
And I just happened to, she just started, and I had my iPad, and I'm taking pictures. And I heard her start to speak, and I said, do you think you could say that again? And then I put it on video real quick.
Good catch.
Yep. So, I wish I could capture more of that. It just happened to be in the right place at the right time. So, that's worthy of celebration, we think. And then, you heard Tom speaking last month about eighth grade writing. And here's a way that students reflect on their own learning. So, that metacognitive piece about what have I learned as a student through a project. I can set up the project for you a little bit. Students had to choose a topic that they were really passionate about. They had to identify some themes that they wanted to convey, and then they had to figure out how they were going to convey that message. So, you could use a PowerPoint. You could, I saw two eighth graders singing. You could do a visual collage. And this student wrote about, did a photography essay. And so, her original lead, and LEAF is what they use in five, six, seven, eight, and then up into the high school. So, we're very purposeful in using this LEAF format so that we make that continuum. So, her first lead was, I think that I should get a B because the feedback that I got were three checks and two check pluses. That's feedback from her peers. Her new lead after instruction around LEAFs was, everyone has their own definition of photography, but mine is different. Finally, I get to do a project on photography. I've been waiting for this. You just hear that passion coming through. The finisher, I got a B because I don't have enough evidence, but I believe that I have enough for someone to know what I was talking about. And they could do it if they were interested. I learned that photography is more than just taking photos. It's the photo showing its beauty for as long as it can last. Much more powerful ending. Much more powerful. So, there's evidence of direct instruction making a difference for a student.
All right. So, I kind of compacted mine all on one slide. So, actually, can that not be showing?
No, that should not be showing.
Go to the next slide. Did it not switch?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. So, you've heard a bunch of examples of different ways that classroom teachers use assessment in their classroom, and here's just some more. So, in math, there's a lot of use of exit cards, and that's just a really simple, quick question or task that students will do, usually at the very end of class, and it usually is asking them to reflect on that day's learning. Supposed to be short, quick, so much so that a teacher could kind of separate it and say, you know, got it, not quite there, don't got it, and then make, just make piles, and then help them make a decision for tomorrow or the next day. So, these are really quick, real-time ways of assessing students in the classroom. This one you heard a little bit about in the other room, using kneecap release task. This was a really interesting thing. So, teachers get together, they analyze the kneecap release task, which is a state assessment, and that'll be later in the presentation. But one of the things we've noticed over time is that there are certain areas of knowledge that kids just have misconceptions about that are just longstanding and really hard to break. One of them is that when you have an area model for fractions, you need the same-sized pieces. So, this is a task that was given to fourth graders on third grade instruction. This year, 51% of the CSSU got it correct. 56% of our students got it correct, which is great. We're higher than CSSU, but we're talking 50%. And so, this is something that we want to make sure that third grade teachers are using and working within their classroom. So, knowing that, the teachers decided to use this as an entrance task and an exit task, which was a really interesting twist on things. So, what they did was the kids came in, they did the task, and it says, Ken made a design, painted one-sixth of the design white. Which design could he have made? And so, predominantly, right here is the first answer. It's incorrect. The pieces are not the same size. So, a whole studio lesson in best practices was done around this topic. So, we had a whole lesson, and then at the end of the lesson, the question was, it was turned over on the back, and the kids were asked to go back and look at what they said in the beginning. And the task was, if you still agree with your answer, justify why. And if you don't agree with your answer, change it and tell us why. About, I think it was, I don't remember what the switch was, but in the end, I think it was like 15 or it was a low percent of kids got it right. And at the end, 85% of the kids had switched their thinking and had a reasonable way of explaining their justification. So, that was really great. So, we can use a release task for assessment. This is a new thing. This is a use of scripts to guide conversations. And it's mainly, right now, I'm seeing it a lot in primary, but it's very usable in all grades. What happened in primary is teachers, through their daily observations in classrooms, were noticing that when kids were playing their workplace activities and games, that they were getting more involved in the game. And the math was sort of getting lost. And the whole point is, to play the game to reinforce the math that you're learning. So, they instituted some things called these scripts. And it's just a direction that the kids follow. You do whatever you're supposed to do in the game, and this game it would take. And then, when they get a match, they say, let's talk math, and so on and so forth. And what's happening is the kids are being responsible about using that script, so therefore, they are thinking about the math, explaining the math, justifying their reasoning for the math to each other. So, the math is being brought to the forefront. And that was all based on classroom assessments where it was getting lost in the shuttle. So, that was that one. The one that we covered up was very exciting. So exciting that I ran into Allegra's office after I got this data, and it was because I was just thrilled about this. So, a teacher gave a pre-test, a full unit pre-test on fractions, and they were being expected to multiply a whole number by a unit fraction. So, three times one-fourth, or three times one-fifth, or three times one-sixth. And in the pre-test, she voluntarily correlated all her data, looked at it, and said, my kids know this. This is not an area of, you know, a need in instruction. And that was not the case in other classes. So, what would you do? So, you've given this pre-test. Your kids don't need this particular bit of instruction. So, what might you do?
To use the next level. All right, move on.
Any other thoughts? So, what she did, which she came to me and says, what do I do? And I said, so, let's think about, the test has specific tasks. And so, we took the Common Core out, and we thought about our learning and best practices, and, right over here, and we were trying to say, well, how do the kids, they know how to do it. They knew how to, you know, physically solve the problem, but how are they making sense justifying and generalizing the rules? So, we started to say, well, how can we help these kids make generalization?
Go ahead.
So, looking at what fourth graders are now being expected to do, which is this grade level now, they started having conversations about the general case. And when you look at this and you think, oh, my God, fourth grade, you know, A, B, what do they mean? I mean, this is big-time stuff. So, they started analyzing, and I'm not going to go through the whole conversation, but basically, they're looking at this, they're applying it to, well, what happens when it's not a unit fraction? What if it was two-fourths, or two-fifths, or two-sixths, or three-fourths? So, they had this whole conversation, they're making this public record. And at the very end, they decided to make a list of all the generalizations that they felt were important to the task. And I love the first one. The A can mean anything, you know, that whole idea of a variable, which is really a big deal. But what was really just a wonderful example of how this kind of instruction and the work that we're doing with Math Habits of Mind and Interaction is raising the equity in the classroom, is that a student, as we were starting to work through the generalizations that they made, that if it's not a unit fraction, let's say it was two-fourths or three-fourths, a student sitting over on the side, a student who struggles in math, totally does, on a repeated basis, said, it works for any number. Like, duh, you know? And when I hear that tone of voice, I look, because I want to know why that student is so confident in what they're saying. So, I asked him what he meant. And he went on to explain, it doesn't matter what you put here. It's going to be 2A, or 5A, or 30A. And I said, well, will that work all the time? And that's when they started, the wheels were turning. So, using a pre-assessment, we could, if not, if she hadn't used that pre-assessment, she would have just re-taught the unit the way it was. That these kids got just incredibly deep, rich, full of rigor instruction.
Do all teachers use pre-assessments?
Pardon me?
Do all grades use pre-assessments, or has that been moved to?
Pretty much. I'm going to say, three, four, five, if a lot of it is built in to the program. And one, two, three.
I mean, K1, 2.
I'm sorry, I mean, 1, 2, K1, 2. K, no. 1 and 2, I think they do have pre-assessments that they do pre-improve. They're not exactly the same, but they cover the same content.
Right.
That's a good question. I have to think about that for a minute. So, that last slide was about content. This is about the practices, math practices, habits of interaction, and habits of mind. So, in the Common Core, we're being held to assessing those, and we need to have kids be metacognitive and mindful about their own learning about this. So, this is an example of what a class might be asked to do. Circle any habits of mind that helped you be a mathematician today. Pick one of the habits, explain how it helped you. Circle any of these. Pick one and explain how it helped you. So, we're asking kids to really be thoughtful about how they are changing and becoming mathematicians. So, that's another pre-assessment. And you would use that data to, if everybody is always stuck here, then we would be thinking about, okay, how are we going to bring that into our instruction? Which brings us to the next part. We've talked about classroom. We're going to talk about common local assessment. Before Betsy talks, I just want to say that common local assessment is a little bit tricky. It could be common across CSSU. It could be common across a grade level in a building. And sometimes that data overlaps, but we just want to make sure that common local means that it's not just what's happening in your classroom.
So, again, you see, I put up a sample of what we are using for local assessment in reading, DRP, the benchmark assessment. And every spring, I put together a chart with every grade level, and I look at the data and how our students are performing on our end-of-the-year assessments. And this was last year's third graders, which is exciting to see that using the Santez and Penau text levels, 88% of our students met the standard. What you don't see below here, because due to confidentiality, I could not share, is that I also break out the data by subgroup. We look at our SES numbers at the grade level, how many students are meeting the standard, how many are below. We look at students' IEPs, students who have SES and IEP. So, I'm putting that data out there, and we are talking about that data all the time with teachers. So, I just wanted to make that note, especially after you saw Molly's presentation. This is HCS-DRP cohort data, again, looking at data over time. These are our fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders. I do want to make sure that people see that this is spring, 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 and fall. We only give the DRP to eighth graders in the fall. They use that data at CBU to help them figure out how students are performing. So, we do not give it in the spring. But what you can see is
Betsy, what's DRP?
Degrees of reading power.
Thank you.
Do you want to explain what the test is, like, will?
If you want to go back to the slide, I can show it.
Yeah, it's this part right here.
So, this is an example of the DRP, where you have a passage with words that are missing. It's a closed-type passage, and they have to figure out, students have to figure out what word would make sense in the passage. About 65 questions, so it's also, in some degrees, a test of stamina to get through those passages.
And what's SES stand for?
Students with Socioeconomic Status.
Are you done with this one?
Yep. So, what I wanted to show out of this slide is, these numbers are still the same, 74 and 74. But what you can see, which is really exciting, is that the proficient with distinction has bumped up. And you saw that in the presentation in the other room as well. So, it's really interesting to look at our cohort data because we do have a lot of students that move in and move out. And when you look at cohort data, those are students who have been with us over time. Here's some of our writing assessment. The reason I made this part of the slide really big is because this is some really important work. This is teachers sitting down and looking at student work. This is thinking about, what do we notice about our students' writing in terms of purpose, organization, detail? And the big, big thing is, what are we going to do about it?
At all grade levels, different?
Yeah, right. So, that's the exciting work. And so, that's that collaborative piece that you heard Molly also speaking to in the other room about the importance of collaboration around collaborative scoring, and then making plans to support each other with instruction.
And in math, we're doing the same kind of work around common and local assessments. This is an example of what a result of a checkup. This year, every grade level in K through five had to do a number corner assessment. That's a common across CSSU, actually. And there's a baseline in the beginning of the year, and then there's four assessments across the span of the year. This was the last one in March. So, this is kindergarten group, and they got together, and, you know, this list keeps going down with lots of threes. But, and three means that you met it, you're okay. Four means you're met it plus with distinction. But they were looking at this group of kids here, and they, this is not one classroom, this is the whole grade level. So, they started looking at what the kids did. Oh, you brought them up. Thank you. So, they kind of noticed that these kids, this whole group of kids, is teen number identification, teen number writing, teen number cardinality, like being able, it was all about teen numbers. So, we sat, we planned some little activities around teen numbers and stories and little activities. We have this basket, and now we have somebody who is going around, based on our assessment, and working with these kids several times a week for short blips of time, boosting up this whole idea of what they were missing here. So, that's another way that we're using the data. Now, this is happening in K5. These two slides here are talking about year-to-year trends. We've been paying attention to fact automaticity, which is a very measurable, one little tiny piece of math. So, what I've been looking at is, this goes back to 2010, and the past several years, how are grade levels ending up with their automaticity in a given operation, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division? So, years ago, kids just really weren't So, years ago, kids just really weren't learning their facts, it was just, it was not great. Um, our attention to it has become pretty, pretty intense, and the numbers are going up. There are some blips and, and ups and downs, and we talk about why. Uh, but steadily, the attention is going up. And what we would like to see is, we're not even assessing fact automaticity in those upper middle grades. They need to be thinking about computational fluency. So we're trying to close that gap and get it, in fact, the Common Core is really expecting that by the end of third grade, that you know all their facts. Right now, I'd be really excited if we could get it by the end of fourth grade, 'cause these kids haven't been working on that um assumption uh until now. The one way that I'm looking at it, is that one tool that we use is FastMath, um, that's an online program. And the young kids really like it, and over, between last year and this year, we have a huge number of, a huge increase in the number of students actually using it. We also have a huge number of students who are using it more than three times a week. So, the more kids using it, and the more frequently that they're using it, I'm hoping that that's going to translate into higher numbers here. So that's another way, that's sort of a, a local assessment that I, I do, but I share with teachers. And so, every month, I go around, I do my, you know, prize show for kids who are really getting on frequently, and the teachers are getting handed the data for their class. And seriously, I'll hand them the data, and they get out their pen, and they start looking at the kids who aren't getting on regularly, and they're already circling it before I leave the room. So, we are paying attention to it, and for kids that FastMath isn't a great program for, we have other programs that we're working on, because one size doesn't set off. This is, whoops, go back one more. This last one is just a common unit assessment, kind of like what I talked about before. This is just um a non-required data entry, where the pre-test, the post-test, and these are topics that were in that particular um unit assessment, and how kids were doing on it. So we can actually go down and looking at adding coins, multiple choice, see the kids who are struggling with that, and then make decisions about what we're going to do. So that's how we're using these unit assessments at this point, which are very informative. Okay. Now we move to the state assessment. And the state assessment piece, um, it's the most public. It's, it's what everyone sees who reads a newspaper, and is interested in, in those school conversations. But really, on a day-to-day basis, it's the least useful. Uh, all the stuff that we've talked about until now are the things that drive our instruction day-to-day. However, that being said, state assessments are very, these big ticket, big picture assessments are very helpful in looking at trends over time. They're very helpful in thinking about, uh, making some programmatic decisions. Occasionally, it's, it's helpful in looking at students, um, but it wasn't designed to look at students. But what we're, what we're thinking about is that, like I said, for the fraction piece, we know now, because we've seen it year after year, that that aspect of fraction knowledge is just over and over again, something that we really need to work on. The other one is equality. You know, knowing that three plus five equals box plus one, you don't put an eight there. You know, if that seems so simple, but that idea of equality, and what does equality mean, is something that we've been paying attention to for a long time, and district-wide is still an issue. Those are things that we can, we can find in NECAP, because of those we leave CAP. So this is our whole school. I think you saw whole CSSU.
Yep.
And, um, so this is three through eight, overtime. And I'm just gonna let you look at that, and maybe
I have a question.
Yeah.
When did bridges start?
Um, well, that's kinda tricky. The, six years ago kindergarten started. Five years ago kindergarten started, four years ago, one and two came on.
You're talking about bridges and
That's the first, are you talking about the program that we used? Okay, four years ago, um, the one, twos, actually, the rest of them came on, and that was addition one. This year, the new addition, which is Common Core aligned, which the rigor is definitely um upped, the ante is definitely upped, started this year with K one and two, you know, even though it's still bridges, it's almost like having a new program. I mean, there are some commonalities, and there are some things, oh yeah, we did this, yeah, I know, but it's like having a new program. And three, four, five are coming on board next year. So it's been a five-year process, but we've had a little switch in the middle.
Don't you think we should see it trend up if, if the
I think, well, you're looking at three through eight here, so you're looking at um, uh, data that's not just about bridges. The thing about bridges, in conjunction with the work that we're doing with the teacher development group, is a cultural shift. And I think that, do you, I would like to see it start increasing. But until now, I am really happy that our population is going up, and that we are maintaining a, a pretty decent percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding the standard. And I know, you know, it's like seventy-five percent, well, a little more than seventy-five percent over time. Would we like it to be better? Sure, but when you think about that, you know, that's twelve kids, we are, we have a couple who have services, we have a couple who had a bad day, you know, this is a one-shot deal. And that's why, that's why I hate the fact that NECAP is the most public, because it's, it, it doesn't give you the day-to-day information that I see the shifts happening. This is, it's gonna take a really long time. You'd have to have a really big, um, large number of students changing uh and growing at once to increase those percentages.
And we also talked about, um, how, because our enrollment is going up, that eighty percent of three hundred and seven
Yeah, that, the actual numbers are increasing.
Is two hundred and forty-six kids who are meeting the standard, or are, um, were proficient or proficient with distinction. Whereas when you looked at the eighty-five percent of two hundred and eighty-six, it was two hundred and forty-three students. So we are, these numbers don't show that, that
Yeah, and it's because you're using a percentage, same thing with seventy-seven percent of this, versus seventy-four percent of this, is a different, this is seven more students. Six, six or seven more students, I, I'm not really, I, I figured it out, but I'm not, um, blanking, I think it was seven more students. So, are more students doing better? Yeah, but it's not showing up in the percentages, because remember, we're, we're talking three through eight, we're talking a lot of kids, so.
And I guess the only thing, I guess the only thing that I would add is that, and I heard this continuously at the, at the CSSU assessment review, is, is that in isolation, these numbers mean one thing, but um, there are times and trends in years where uh NECAP across the board goes, dips in some, depending on the test and things like that. So it's really, it's really hard to say, you know, this is, this is one data point, and uh, there's, there's so many ways to disaggregate data, and it's, it's really tough. But I, I understand what you're saying, and, you know, the other thing too, is that math probably, for me, has changed more in the last six years than any other, you know, writing is writing, and, and we've kind of known what, what this moved toward engineering and things like that, that the programs and, that we're using are trying to catch up with, with the assessments, or, or vice versa, and it's, so it's ever-changing, so it's, it's not, I would like us to continually move forward, but it's always, uh, we're always trying to catch up to the programs. The programs are trying to catch up with the assessments and
And usually, you would expect a dip. You would actually, when things change so much, you would usually kind of, and so the fact that we're actually maintaining, and in some cases, you know, we had this sort of little trend of getting bigger, um, then we had this drop this year for whatever reason overall, um.
And that's why if it was overlaid with, with what the NECAP across the board was, it, it might be very telling that, you know, in two thousand thirteen, maybe everybody went down ten percent, and we went down three percent. And, you know, it's just, it's really hard to
And I do, I do wanna mention that if you are someone who's really interested in looking at this data, we can't compare ourselves to the state this year. Did Molly talk about that? Um, because so many districts opted out. Okay, we can go to the next one. I don't remember what the next one was.
Okay, so, this is taking a look at our students with SES only. Um, again, we were paying quite a close attention to them. Again, we wanna point out that the numbers have jumped up dramatically. Um, and when you think about that, we are making gains, we are making a difference for some of our students. Do we have a ways to go? Yes, we do.
This, yeah, this, this is actually an increase in the number of students, even though we went down that percent. But I'm very excited about that, especially for this population of struggle. Questions on that slide?
So, um, Molly pointed out the use of cohort results, and um, this is looking at our NECAP overtime for our eighth graders. Um, what were they doing as third graders, what are they doing as eighth graders? Um, interesting to know that there were forty-three students enroll, enrolled every year, you know, for all of those years. What is really exciting to see, um, is sixty-seven percent of our eighth graders are proficient with distinction. So, so that's exciting. We continue to work on that.
Let's take the next one to them. Okay, so we have a similar slide, looking at the same cohort over time. We're kind of maintaining here. I will also say, Bill, I'm still thinking about your question, we also have a new program at six, seven, and eight. To, uh, and I will say that the rigor in the six, seven, and eight has, is super amped. I mean, it's, it's, these kids are learning some really amazing, or they're being exposed to things that we didn't get exposed to until high school courses, so, um.
And Nancy's spending a lot of time, you're spending quite a bit of time
Yeah, I'm, I'm up in the middle school and what, I, traditionally, over, over my tenure here, I spent a lot of time at K six, and very little time at, um, middle school this year, sort of reversed, uh, because, especially in eighth grade. Eighth grade is, um, with the new algebra component, it's been, it's been a really fun, interesting journey for all of us. So we're, you know, I, I feel pretty good about this. Do I want it to go up? Of course. But again, we do have more kids who are proficient with distinction, that's a jump of seven percent, that's a pretty significant jump. Questions about that? And the, you know, the other thing I was going to say about any of these, is that when we get data that doesn't look good, that we, we don't wanna see, that is just as important, and actually more important in a lot of ways, than the data that looks good. You know, the data that looks good, it's really good to pat ourselves on the back and say, great, we're doing a great job. But the data that doesn't look good, that's the information, that's just like a classroom teacher saying, these kids aren't getting this, so we need to do something. So when we get data that's not really exciting, or we wanna, you know, we wonder why, you can never pinpoint a cause. You can manipulate those numbers any way you want, but we can start looking and digging deeper and saying, so why is this this way? And what are we going to do about it? So, you know, I, I always give the example of the Venn diagram. When you have a piece of data that's outside the Venn diagram, that piece is, is of equal importance as everything that's inside the Venn diagram. If it doesn't fit into the category, there's a reason. So, we pay attention to the, to the good news, but we also pay attention to the not-so-good news. And I think that's really important.
Nancy, when you're looking at these numbers, like, when these children were, say, this group was in, you know, fifth grade.
Okay.
And the below proficient was at, what is that, uh, forty?
Thirty.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, did we do some sort of level of intervention? That just seems, I don't know, do you guys have a mark of where you say, okay, we've got this grade, and we've got twenty-five percent is below, you know, below proficient? So we need to, we need more resources on these kids. 'Cause that seems like, over the years, we didn't
This, this has only decreased a little bit.
Right, that's a little disturbing to me, that we lost them.
Yeah, and it is, and that's what we need to pay attention to. That's one of the reasons why, um, this year, we're starting to think about a difference in the model for next year for intervention. We've done a lot of work in literacy and intervention, we have not done that much work yet with math. Um, we, you wanna?
Well, just another point is, um, I know that some of these numbers, although kids might still be below proficient, what you don't see is the change in the scaled score. So, I, I think that, right, they're still below proficient, and we want everybody to be proficient or more. But we're, if we weren't seeing any growth at all, that would, we don't have the scaled score up here. And I can't remember the below proficient is a huge scaled score.
Betty, Betty and I went out on the, kind of the cheerleading club, remember? We went through every student who wasn't proficient, and we looked to see, did they grow any points? 'Cause some of those ranges are large.
Yeah.
And so, grew, you know, they, in order to make more than a year's growth, or to, to get into a proficient category from a really low, nearly, is a huge amount of growth. And we, we made sure that we went to teachers and, and talked about it, and celebrated that, because, you're right, they didn't cross the line
Right.
For the next, so they don't show up there, but boy, did they ever make growth, and thanks for bringing that up.
And the bar is raised every year.
Yes, exactly.
Exactly, exactly.
And some of the kids, just to remember, they're taking a test that's a third-grade test, but because they're on an IEP, they're, just their different learning styles or their abilities, they are performing at a first-grade level. But they are still taking a third-grade test, because that's what the expectation is, and that's, you know, NECAP is
After the summer, from the year before
But also, NECAP has come under fire for that, which is what you were talking about in the CSSU meeting, that, did you call it gaming? I hadn't heard that term before.
Well, adaptive assessment
Adaptive, I'd heard.
And gaming.
And gaming, I know, I was like, whoa! But the adaptive assessment will be great for all kids.
And with us back, it's in the same year. So you're gonna have instruction, um
I think it will be, it'll be much more useful for us too.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll cover that on the end.
Absolutely.
So go ahead.
All right.
We are at a cap.
We're gonna, we have four slides left.
Do you wanna talk about this one?
Um, so this is our NECAP science data, and as Molly mentioned, we are in the midst of taking NECAP right now, um, today, for some, some grades. Um, and so I wanted to point out, looking again at cohort data, when these are current eighth graders, um, who, no, these eighth graders These are current ninth graders, because they took it in the spring of their eighth grade year. Seventy percent of those students met or exceeded the standard in science. When you look back to where they were as fourth graders, forty percent. So we know we're making, we know we're making gains. Um, we've also, in the last two years, have spent a lot more emphasis on writing in science, science notebooks,
Stamina.
Stamina in science. So I'm anticipating that when we get the results for this year, they'll be even higher.
How many years has it been since we specialized the middle school teachers?
So, I was gonna bring that up, I mean, seventy on paper, just that number, it's like, wow, like, we're doing eighty-six percent in, in reading, like, seventy's pretty low. That's fourth in the state, as, that was mentioned earlier. Our science program is phenomenal, I, and keep asking about the compartmentalization of, of the teachers, uh, that, that is in year two.
It was in between those, oh nine and thirteen, right?
Yeah, where we have one sixth-grade science teacher, and one seven, eight science teacher, and, and I do attribute so much to, to the math, uh, achievement and the science. It's, and every literacy, I mean, just, uh, right across the board.
Isn't fifth grade as well, this year?
So, so now, yeah, we've, we've moved it down to, to fifth grade, and uh, and just when you, when you can focus on one, one content area. And, you know, of course, it, it makes sense, definitely in the middle-level grades, and it inferred a lot of reasons. It doesn't make as much sense in the, in the elementary grade, so.
So the other piece we wanted to mention is that we do look at behavioral data, and that's really important as well. Um, and when students are less time out of the classroom, means more time in the classroom for learning. Um, and so Jen Bradford shared this piece of data with us, again, it's historical data, looking over time. But in the summary of that is, that the, this um, orange color bar, which is your major referrals, has really dipped over time, over, over, um,
Top November, but besides that, you're good.
Yes, yes.
Each color, yeah.
Probably right before Thanksgiving break, would be my guess.
No doubt, no doubt.
What did I say, the true colors come out, or something like that?
So we wanted to make sure that we included this, because we think that this is an important piece of data as well.
Probably speaks to the culture in the school too.
Absolutely.
And I could speak to this, my first year, that the office was filled with kids.
Daily.
Six hours a day, I would walk in, and there'd be four kids waiting to talk to me. Uh, that's when we put in a, a behavior interventionist the following year. Uh, now, now with the, the system of support that we have, and students sent out of the classroom for whatever reason, and, and that a person brings that student right back into the class, I mean, processes very quickly and brings them back in. So even though there's referrals, that, that, that is just a small representation of how much time a student is actually out of the class. Instead of waiting twenty minutes, it's a five-minute boom, boom, you're back in. And the teachers, I have to say, the teachers have owned so much of the behavior, and, and they're absolutely phenomenal, working with parents and, and with the supports that they have to keep the students in their classroom, so I do have to give kudos to them.
But we also have a lot of support in our school to help the teachers do that, that work too, which is a wonderful thing about our building. So, what, you know, we're doing a next step, so what's next? And so, we kind of consolidated this a little bit. The Common Core standard, we are, um, being held accountable for them starting now. And with that, the continued work in best-first instruction, which, you know, we did it in math, but it crosses everything. You go into a literacy classroom and you're hearing the same language, which is, which is great. So, that's going to, going to continue for some people who are leaving their third year. The model may change a little bit, but this work continued. Um, S-Back, which is the Academic for Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, the first assessment will be in two thousand fifteen, spring of two thousand fifteen. So, the spring of next year. And that is the computer-adapted, uh, system, which means that it, it changes based on what you've just responded. So, every kid's assessment doesn't look the same. Do you get a true assessment of where that student is? The other thing I wanted to say about that is at the end of the year, so in fourth grade, if you can finish fourth grade, it's at the end of the year, there's a window in fourth grade. But across the year of fourth grade, there are formative assessment parts of the puzzle that aren't required, but help students get ready. Start thinking about that kind of an assessment, which is going to be great data for us to be using. And that's all brand new to all of us, so we'll, we'll have more to talk about next year when we get there.
And, and all of that work is embedded in some of our action plans.
Right.
If you haven't seen the draft yet, you'll see it soon. Any questions for us? We're at forty-eight minutes.
Sorry, sorry.
We were trying to watch that time.
We really did.
I have a question and, and a, and a comment. First, I want to make a comment is, I heard in a presentation earlier, I've heard from, talked to administrators and even folks before, that the kneecaps are bad, not the best way to take a picture to look at, you know, how the school is doing. I can accept that. I think from a parent perspective, is, it's the only thing we got. It's the only thing we're given, and for parents who are interested and want to see how the school is going, you know, it's all available data, we can all look at it. And that's all we have, so it's, it's just a comment, um, I make. So, I just think it's hard, parents are, at least myself, I still have to see for myself, I'm always looking for ways to say, well, geez, how is our school, how is our school doing? How are those trends, how are we doing versus other schools? You know, a parent asks me, do you think our school's better than Charlotte's school? I mean, you know, academically, whatever, whatever.
The answer's yes.
Well, of course, of course, but the point is, and, and maybe, so when they look at those things, that's what they pull out. So, I mean, I, I guess my comment is, if you don't like people using that as the, as the tool they use to look at where our school, then we got to have something else.
Yeah.
My question was, is, um, I heard someone say, Kelly asked, I think, does everyone do pre, does everyone do pre-assess assessments? And you said, pretty much. And you also said, all third grade teachers are using this rubric, and you're excited about it?
My teacher, I was talking about the writing rubric.
Correct.
Yes.
I guess my question was, would be.
For that informational piece of text.
Correct. If that was an effective tool, you found a tool to be very effective, why isn't, why isn't that a requirement? To say, this is how we, this is a tool we use to assess whatever. It seems to me that that, if, if you have a best practice and it's effective, why isn't it a choice proposition? This is how we do it, this is how we get the best data, so kids perform the best, you're doing it. Why, why doesn't that happen?
I'm, I want to, the third grade teachers developed that rubric using information from Lucy Cawkins.
Okay.
And I actually have their rubric right here. So, they developed the kind of the score point three, what are we looking for in terms of the cover, the table of contents, the introduction, the habitat, the food, et cetera. So, they developed this as a team. I would want, not want to mandate that they have to share this with fourth grade teachers or fifth grade teachers. Because the power was in those third grade teachers sitting down and saying, what do we know about what the writers can do? What do we know about our instruction? What are we looking for? And making that really clear. So, I, once I step in and say, well, we have to do this three through five, people will, I take away the ownership.
Isn't that also project-specific too?
Yeah, this was project, this was about their rainforest.
If I could hop in though, that's the power of collaboration. Our, our teachers are constantly getting together and sharing and learning from each other and, and developing, but I completely agree that ownership piece is huge.
There are many rubrics like that, teachers are already doing.
I guess you, I guess you get the bigger question I'm getting at, I guess, really.
Well, I think what, I think what you're, what you're getting at is that that's a really powerful assessment tool. And I guess what I would counter with is she shows you a third grade. We could show you a fourth grade, we could show you a first grade, we could show you the continuum five-eight of, you know, the five-eight teachers as a literacy team sit down, we, we talk about who's doing what, and then we ta, I mean, much like all the other grades. Where kindergarten teachers were all, would all come together, the five-eight all come together to take a look at where are we and what are we missing. I guess my takeaway from this entire presentation is that, um, what Nancy said about when we take a look at the data, sometimes where we're failing is just as important. And I can't tell you how hard teachers are on themselves. Like, when they take a look at the data, they go right there and say, wh- what am I not doing well enough? And, you know, the, the power, and I think, you know, one thing that I've been thinking about is, when you're talking about that messaging to the parents, is how do we get, you know, that information out to the parents? Because, you know, they're, they're so diligent, not only on their grade level teams, but also across grade levels sharing that information. So, and it's hard, it's hard to present that in a, in a PowerPoint, but that's happening across the board and it's, it's absolutely incredible to see and watch, so.
And what you don't see, in order to get to that place, that culture of trust and acceptance and collegiality has to be built. And that just doesn't come by magic, by putting people into a room. And so, the fact that teachers are willing to put themselves out there and say, you know, my kid bombed on this, and what are you doing that your kid didn't bomb? Is, it, it really, that's a hard thing to do. Um, but we are getting so much better at it, and how wonderful is that? The other thing I wanted to say, Bill, is what I'm hearing you say is, sounds a lot like what the district is doing for choosing assessment that is common across CSSU. And we do have certain things. Are they perfect benchmarks? Yet, for, for math, I'm going to honestly say, we're working on it.
Sure.
Um, but we do have things that we say all third graders are doing, and this is required, and you will enter this into V-CAP. On-demand writing, it is required and, you know, all information is looked at in V-CAP. And we have incredible ability to look at it within school, within grade, across school, across district, you know, so some pieces of that are developing.
But it's only across district, there's nothing like a kneecap, and I think that's what you're looking for.
Right, right.
Is there more information like, I mean, you could, it's only across our SU. Other schools aren't doing what we're doing.
I, I guess, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. I guess what I'm saying is, is I, I just often hear, the kneecap isn't a good way to look at where we're at or performance or anything else, but I'll say, that's all we got. So, we got, so that's why we look at it.
Exactly.
And the way the system is set up is, is bad, because by the time you can see it or we can see it, it's months old. This, this is stuff from a long time ago. And it was one day, you know, so I take your point, you know, it is what is out there, and that's why I say, it's very public, but it's not.
Not anymore.
It's not, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, till next year, right.
Right.
So, point well taken, for sure.
Well, thank you.
And I did want to just remind everyone that we have our common assessment, um, system, which is CSSU-wide. Um, and that's pretty exciting. And when I think about when I first started as a literacy coordinator seven years ago or something.
Each grade level has.
This was not even a dream at that point. And to have this cohesion across a district of our size is pretty amazing.
It's huge. It's huge, yeah. And that's why we want to get it right, could you change anything?
And the fact that we have the system with V-CAP to collect that data.
Yeah.
Is also pretty amazing too. And, and how we get everything all lined up can be a little crazy sometimes, but.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Okay?
I think we're doing a great job. I really do.
You mean the school?
No, hosted, hosted.
We're doing a great job too, we're hot, but, um, no, I really do. And, and, you know, I'm a parent in another district and I, you know, you have your parent hat and your teacher hat and you, you can always, I just, I just feel really proud of the work that our school is doing in, in many ways. And assessment is tough because, you know, I just had a conversation, this is totally off the cuff, but with a, a person whose child is working in the South and where assessment is linked to, um, evaluation, and there's so much pressure, and there's, it's all about assessment. And it's not about children or instruction, it's all about how my kids are performing. And I said, what a loss, I mean, you know, and I feel like we are in so much of a better place because that stress must just be awful. I would never want to teach in the South where that, that's where it is. But it's, I just, I don't know.
Um, just a quick question, do we ever report at the school board level or publicly the algebra placement scores?
Are they public?
I mean, does that have names, but how many of our eighth graders place that they can skip algebra?
Um, no, I don't, we've never, we've never been out, but.
And it's never a clear cut, like, if you get this number, then you're in, there, there's conversations that happen.
That's true, sure, that's true.
You know, somebody might be borderline, so it, it would be hard to quantify. I mean, at the, what, what we could do is give percentages, like, one number, like seventy-five percent of our students who are in eighth grade went on to geometry in high school. As, as bare bones, that we wouldn't want to dig any deeper for confidentiality, but, um, you know, I think that, um, something like that, I'm sure Molly is, is aware of and will be tracking it because it's going to be important. Yeah, as, as you saw, or, uh, that was, that was kind of presented in the previous presentation at the CSSU level in terms of.
We talked about that.
How mu, how successful students that were exposed to algebra became in high school and things like that. So, not as easy as that, I mean, it was a ten-minute conversation.
I would want, I would think the school board would want to watch that, considering the changes that have been made in the math program in the eighth grade.
Take a, you can go online and pull up the CSSU, um, presentation because it does, as Jeff noted, it has data, um, presented that shows students who took algebra and where they are a couple of years later.
But it didn't, but it didn't show how many.
Yeah, a lot of time about the shakeup we've done in this curriculum.
It's not showing up a lot.
Right, what percent, what percent?
Of, of how did it impact those, those students?
I would imagine that because she's been tracking that data over time, that this year, you know, there, there is a switch in the program that that's just going to be factored into the graph that she's producing, and it, it is pretty, the first time I've seen all of those in succession, so, um, yeah, it's, it's worth looking at. And I also want to say that some kids don't go into algebra, they, they have other course choices, um, you know, but you're talking about an exam, that's a CBU exam. I guess that would be a CBU.
Yeah, but I'm not just saying, I, I would just want to know that they had the option or some, just some metrics that you measure, um, just with us shaking up that eighth grade program that, you know, how, how well, did we shake it up too much? Did we, you know, are we, are we delivering the material? And how do we do, I'd like, I mean, I would like to see it compared to the other three schools in the district of proportionally, you know, how are we? If that many of our students were distinct in math in that eighth grade class, which I can't remember what the number was, but it was phenomenal, right? Did that carry on, and then did they place well at CBU?
Yeah, and that's the information that Molly did present, that, that group, but you're talking about now.
I'm talking about the current eighth grade group.
One of the things that the CSSU board has been working with, um, administrators on, and, you know, we've been very clear that board work versus administrator faculty work and so forth, but outcomes and indicators, because the board's requests have, and I'm talking at CSSU level, has been to, um, you know, how do we know that we're doing well? Because it is more than kneecaps, it's more than this once-a-year assessment and you get the data eighteen months later and, you know, what do you do with that? So, the CSSU board for the past couple of years has really been, um, advocating and supporting the work of developing outcomes and indicators. And one of the, one of the assessment measures would be related to algebra, let's say. But it's really up to faculty and administrators to decide what the measures are. The board has asked, can you give us some information that relates to how our kids are doing in math? How they're doing with civic service, how they're doing with whatever it might be? And so, we'll hear more about that, I think, in the next month or two, and then, um, an initial report next fall. So, we'll start getting that, but I also have to say that we've avoided doing disaggregating of some of the data from school district to school district when it comes to CBU, and there's a whole history that goes into that, and, you know, I'd be happy to talk with you further about that. But this goes way back when, you know, just in a nutshell, when Heinsberg was, didn't have the money to do the same kind of program that other school districts could do before nineteen, you know, before we had Act sixty and so forth. There was a clear, um, black mark on kids who came from Heinsberg in CBU. Teachers would say that they knew who went through the Heinsberg School District because they were not performing as well. Generalized, you know, again, this is going back twenty years, and I think we've moved incredibly in a different direction. And so, I would really be cautious about how we would publicly be disaggregating data by town at the high school level.
And my, and my.
And I know that other boards want to know the same thing.
My, and my conversations with people here are like, I don't know, you know, I don't know who comes from what school. You know, when we've, we've talked about, you know, different data points and things, I'm like, I don't know.
The teachers should know that information. Teachers need to be working in that, in those groups, but as far as publicly reporting, I don't think that's records that.
But they actually don't, I mean, they can get it, they actually don't, and that's the conversation now, and I like that.
You mean, Heinsberg teachers need to know that?
Oh, Heinsberg, yeah, yeah.
Kelly, Kelly, I guess to reassure you is that I can tell you that the focus that's being put on this right now at the SU level is, is pretty intense. Uh, we're, we have another meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks where we're going to kind of do a year and review, you know, what's gone well. So, I mean, we're, we're on and, um, it, uh, I know that there's probably a need or a want for, you know, I'd love to see that information and how it breaks down. And I'll, I'll keep that in the back of my head and bring, bring that to the meeting, talking about, you know, how do we communicate this information with the parents? How well was this first year, what are the changes, you know, kind of where are we, where are we going type of information.
How do we know it's working?
I think metrics in any business are important, and, I mean, I, I think that comparing for a parent to compare our, our scores on whatever metric it is versus the other schools in the district's important to me. It tells me, I'm in a district, I have a belief that my child enters CBU and has gotten the same curriculum that the child across the border, town border got. So, if I can't compare those, then you're right, we're talking trash when we're talking to our Charlotte neighbor and saying, is your school better than my school? We don't really know. Do you know what I mean? Like, I, I want to know my child, my child's going into CBU, I want to know my child's going in prepared.
Yeah.
And, you know, you really don't have a handle on it.
Well, I, you know, wouldn't you say you, I don't know if you mean me, but, I mean, would I?
No, me, I don't have a handle on it.
Yeah, but one of the things, one of the expectations that board members have made is that administrators and teachers have learning communities within their school where they are taking that data and chewing on it and figuring out what's going on. And we hold our administrators accountable for making sure that that happens. As far as the board goes, I don't, I don't want to be parsing CBU students apart. Personally, I, you know, I, I think that's dangerous.
Then another way then to, then consider another way that you communicate to parents, basically Jeff was saying, of give us reassurance that our program is equal to the other schools in the district.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what I, I guess, just to clarify, I was talking about, you know, what is that, the, the CSSU communication to the parents? Because this is a CSSU-wide initiative, this is trying, change, change of thinking, you know?
Yeah.
So, and it would, it would really, it would really have to be how a CSSU is going to communicate this with, with the CSSU parents.
I'm, I'm not convinced that's our job as a board, is to report to parents on that question. But I will tell you that every year in our budgeting process, that's a question that comes up all the time when we look at priorities and what programs we're going to invest in. What are other schools doing? Essentially, are we, you know, out of step, or are we keeping up, or are we ahead, you know?
I, I think it would be important to know that, I think that's data that, I think administrators want to have in their fingertips to know are the programs that we're using being effective?
Right, and that's where the V-CAP system can really help out.
And that's the important part, and that, and, and I got to respectfully disagree with Colleen, I think people in the towns pay for the schools and they're, they are allowed to have information, their request, unless it's not drilled down to the student level. If they ask for it, they should be able to get it. That's, that's my feeling, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, your hard work on that presentation. All right, uh, moving along.
Thanks for coming to my hockey game.
Five point oh, that's all right, it's still there. Five point oh, reports to the board, principals report.
So do you have any questions about the principals' report or? I heard it in the planning meeting, I think.
I know.
You did? Thanks for coming to the planning. Stay safe. Yeah. So I think there's a piece to this you need to do.
Piece that I need to do?
Retirements and farewell.
Oh, yeah. Before I get to that, um, I just have an, I always ask a kindergarten question. Any, uh, any changes?
We're at fifty-one.
Fifty-one still.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Good night.
So, so no one really prepped me for this, but now you're queuing me to acknowledge.
Um, the, if you go to the.
The end of the principals' report, yes?
Would you like that?
Yeah, I would.
So we do have some people that we're saying goodbye to.
So I will, it's at the very end of the principals' report.
Teachers and staff leaving our school for a variety of reasons.
Yes, so we would like to acknowledge them and thank them for their years of service. Uh, to our school by name, we would, are thanking Tina Bouvier, our, uh, bookkeeper. Our family and consumer science teacher, Maureen Locker. Our essential skills teacher, Len Schmidt, and our first grader te- first grade teacher, Lee Tuarag. I want to thank you all for their service and for the dedication that they exhibited for HCS, and we wish them all well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll second that. I will second that. I'll be focused. Won't be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Five point two, CSSU debrief. I think, uh, Stacy, you might have been the only one on the board that wasn't there. You've heard, I mean, we had a very similar sort of presentation on the SU-wide assessments. We don't need to get into that. Um, the one thing that I will put on the record here, I think that, that is in addition to that that needs to be, is the SU board made a decision on the treatment of special ed funds. Because under relatively new law, the SU is now in charge of special education, hiring and, and allocation of funds. And the SU board needed decided, needed to decide a methodology. We talked about it as a local last month, I think. Um, the SU board's been looking at it and thinking and discussing it for months, and we made a decision tonight to do it by ADM, which is a methodology that we use for a lot of kids. It could, what's that?
The two, the two bookkeepers here were wondering whether that's good for them and I was.
I was going to say, it will have, it will have a budgetary effect next year. Um, but it is what it is. It, 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 it could be a big hit next year, but hopefully over time it will level it out. And we'll just have to.
Well, over time it will be.
We'll go with it.
We're sharing big hits and big gains amongst all of you, so it, it kind of, it isn't quite as. Yeah. Precipitous each year as it might have been in the past.
I just couldn't remember off the top of my head.
Um, so speaking of financial performance, five point three, financial management report.
It's in your packet. The three of us are willing to answer any questions you might have. The executive summary would say that we're continuing work to close the gap that was created towards the end of last year and the beginning of this year with staffing that wasn't budgeted. Uh, the two of them and the team made continued headway, but you're still looking at a deficit. We still, uh, will exhaust ourselves in the pursuit of closing that deficit by June thirtieth, but don't have it closed right at the moment.
All right. Thank you. Five point four, part two update. Is that from you, Jeff?
Yeah, and what, what I did, uh, for, uh, the other sites, and I, I was going to give you a more in-depth update, uh, at the June retreat. So I could either, it was just kind of saying that we're going to meet our target. Um, we've done some really amazing things in terms of tying the program more closely with the academic side of, uh, the school day. We're, we're running clubs now. Every club has a, a writing and a reading component to it. And, uh, the club aspect has taken off, so it could be an archaeology club where the kids read about, um, anything related to archaeology. Uh, they do a project on it, like a hands-on project, and then they write about their experience. And those happen, uh, once a week for a period of four weeks, so it's in a month time. And on any given week, there are six or seven different clubs and the, the kids absolutely love them. It's been well received by the parents. Um, we have over thirty enrichment offerings for the summer program, uh, bringing outside people in. My hope, looking ahead next year would be to have those same people that are providing those enrichment opportunities in the summer to tie in. Kind of very similar to the club idea, but on a more professional level. These are either professional outside companies or people with areas of expertise that we've talked about for years that are right in our community that we're now accessing. So, um, some, some very cool things. And our numbers continue to stay steady around seventy, uh, which is a really good sized program. So, uh, uh, very happy with the, with the direction of the program and, uh, constantly asking feedback from the parents. And, uh, we have our family night tomorrow night, um, so I'm looking forward to that as well.
Thank you. Five point five, facilities committee. Anything?
Hasn't.
I, I have two things that just, Kathy and I and others are working on that might be of, uh, interest. Kathy and I are set up to visit with Alex in town planning and zoning to kind of walk through his best one can get an understanding of development kind of in the past five years and development in the next five years to understand better when someone mentions one of the larger new developments going in. Uh, we'll have a better sense on whether U five should, should add in some students or it's the same number of students that were going to come into the developments that five years earlier where I talked about. So we'll have some way to, to, uh, take a stab at adjusting enrollment projections that you have right now based on conversations that are being had over there.
Great.
So that means set up, uh, as of this afternoon, I think it was set up for next week or the following week. So we'll report back on that when we finish it. The other one is, you're, the, um, it's been a number of years since capacity has been a, even a conversation in Heinsberg or any other school of the SU. But it looks like Heinsberg will be the first one that, that may be a conversation. If the development rate is such that, um, it adds so significant a number of students, then we're going to have to be talking about the capacity of the school and letting developers know that we're bumping into that. So we're working with your architect, uh, to, uh, kind of recalibrate the capacity number we're using in the building. We used to go to the state to do that because the state was giving thirty percent money. They, they could kind of tell you what your capacity was. They don't give any money, so they don't get to tell us what our capacity is. But, uh, so that's why we're calling your architect to help with that number. And, uh, those two should help understand whether, uh, and then some work Jeff and Allegre are doing locally on just their awareness of space they've got, what they could deploy and when, when they'll be screaming to you that they have no more space left to fit the next teacher in the next classroom. And so we're kind of doing that as well. We'll thread those all together so you'll have a good picture on what the next four or five years might look like.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I think this has come up in the past, maybe. I don't know, but I'm just going to raise it. Um, with other schools in the SU with declining enrollment, has there been the discussion of sharing space with other schools in the SU instead of making more space?
That's my thing.
I don't, I don't get it. I don't get it.
We, I think, I think the most recent example, I'm going to kind of turn it back and you as a board can answer the question yourself. The last conversation I know of anywhere near that topic was, um, the Heinsberg board and the Charlotte board trying to get together and seeing if there was an opportunity. And at that point in time, um, there wasn't sufficient interest to continue the meetings. Is that a good way to?
Yeah, that was, that was me.
It was one meeting.
That was me. It was one meeting and we were kind of told that by statute, we couldn't do that. There was a legislative statute question about it. So, um.
So it's not possible?
Not at this point unless we, maybe talking way out of, um, way in over, over my skis on this, but unless we form some tool town union and then did that. So it's, it's, it's a long way off. But having said that, um, a, a member of Charlotte board approached me and said, well, maybe we need to fire those up again because their enrollment is dropping quite rapidly and they're going to feel a, they'll start feeling possibly a budget crunch. And it may be a necessity for them too. So we've, we've talked about it in, in very general terms. And I think if, my impression is if we, if we get back a, a note from, or Allegre and Jeff saying we're out of space, I think that might really prompt the, the conversations to really, um, start again. Calling yes. Yes. I can't call on her, but yeah. I forgot something. I forgot something.
So, you know, with the, what's happening with the legislature, um, and the discussions about consolidation. So our timeline for that would be, um, like twenty seventeen to make a decision and then full implementation in the state by twenty twenty. So, you know, if there was any discussion of a building project, which I don't see our community supporting, um, you know, that wouldn't even get up and going until twenty twenty or so. So what we need to make sure is that when it comes time for us as board members to be advocating at the state level, we need to be advocating for mechanisms that allow us to move students throughout the SU with no penalties. And that'll help us.
Yep. Yep.
What's the, what's the lead time that, is there some sort of lead time that's being factored in as far as?
There's, there's, that's, uh, that bill was put on hold, passed the House, but didn't go.
Not related to that, but as far as, you know, we must have projections as to when we're going to be above capacity?
Okay, so the last conversation, uh, remembering the conversations, it's no notes were taken, would kind of say that the two of them right now probably have flexibility and space to cover whatever we know is going to happen in the next three years or so. It can change dramatically based on the answer Keith gets to what's the kindergarten enrollment each year. You know, that, that could, that can swing it. So there's, there's some time, it's clearly not, it's clearly not a setup that,
Speaking of water.
That you need to be borrowing ten million dollars and, and build and so forth. The development in the community is a little bit, uh, more, uh, soft because it, it depends on the size of the development, the rate at which it, it builds out. Um, and so those things can, can sometimes move quickly, but more often there's, it's later than someone intended it would be. So it, it, it's nothing imminent, but it is appropriate that you have a facilities committee discussion on, on these topics. It's kind of that, you're at the right point in the timeline. We won't be asking you to buy modulators and install them on the back end of the building to deal with next year's.
Just don't want to be self scrambling. Yeah.
Uh, five point six, technology.
Uh, the meeting was canceled this past week. It's rescheduled to Wednesday.
All right. Thank you.
Keith, I have one quick question from the, to the administration. I've had people in town asking me, what's the question? When will the assignments for the teachers be public?
I don't know what you mean, but you mean.
Who's going to be teaching what?
Ne- oh.
Who, who will be teaching what grade levels, so on and so forth?
Um, by June fir-, I mean, June first is a due date.
Okay.
That we have to let teachers know by, but until then, there's still some moving parts out there.
And even, even after that, things can happen. So, I mean, we, we try to, uh, delay just because of the anxiety of, uh, if, if someone were to retire, which, you know, I mean, uh, so many different, so many different things could happen. It's much more.
Let me ask you, if someone asked me the question, when can I tell them they will know? When they can, so I can point them in the right direction.
Well, class, class lists with the teacher attached to it, I think are scheduled to go out to, parents will have them June eighth.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Right? And then we're doing move up day, June twelfth.
Okay.
Well, it's not a day, it's an hour. Sorry. I've never done that before. We didn't do it in Severn, so I'm excited to see what that.
I just want to tell people something, something.
Yeah. June eighth of the letters go out.
We do have water at the school though, speaking of water, just in case you want a little update about that. There was, there was a great phone call to get yesterday at one thirty afternoon, in the afternoon, and then I'm trying to find Bob early and it's like, ah! But, um, yeah, all worked well. I know that took a, a lot of coordination from parents and families and really appreciate all of that. But when you know you're not going to have water, you have to close the school down. Did you get enough hours in the county as a day? Yes, we did. That was a little bit of negotiations I had with.
That was a negotiation with Rocky, I bet.
Yes, it was. He wanted to shut it down a little earlier, but he was really very helpful and understanding.
I was, I was quite happy, the bus was a tad late this morning, so the kids were celebrating that the bus might not come. I was quite pleased, I was quite pleased to remind them that if the bus did not come because school was canceled, that they would be going to school two extra days.
I know. Yeah. I know. Yeah, we said that to him. Why did we have it anyway? It's only a half day. I said, well, here's the deal. They could do it at night too.
All right. Six point oh, discussion matter. Six point one, input on carousel meeting schedule. So here's the background for those of you that missed the conversation, which might have been you.
Yeah, I'm like, I don't know if this is a meeting.
The Vermont School Boards Association leadership meets on the second Wednesday of every month, which is the same evening that all the CSSU boards meet. So therefore, no one that's on a CSSU board can participate in the Vermont School Boards Association. So people are just asking the question of whether there is some flexibility about moving our meetings onto a different night. So the first question I got to ask everyone is, if we moved it off of the second Wednesday, is that going to be a problem?
No.
All right. All right. So then here are the suggested alternative dates. The second or third Tuesday or the third Wednesday of the month. So go through your mental calendar of what your sort of regularly scheduled meetings are of other things and let me know now or in the next day or so. And I will fill in a little grid I created about what works or doesn't work for any of you. And I will email Kathy as well. Bill's smiling at me because he knows Tuesdays aren't going to work in May.
I can give you my answer now. I, I prefer the third Wednesday.
I was going to say the same thing.
Uh, cause I took the point that if someone was to participate two nights in a row, the second, mm, I think the second Tuesday would be bad for those people who want to participate in the statewide or the regional school board.
Well, first of all, it would, um, to get on the state board, someone would need to be elected from the region. For anyone that would want to go and just watch, it's like, you know, hours.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not talking about that.
So I don't, you know, the, the population affected by that is so small. Um, I think the question would also be is, not preference, but would Tuesdays be okay?
Yeah.
You know, like, like, do you, does someone coach basketball every Tuesday and can't possibly, you know?
Not yet.
You know what I mean? That's.
For me, going towards the end of the month is better, but I can make anything work.
Okay.
Well, skiing things Wednesdays though, right?
There's, there's something every day.
Try to think of that stuff.
T-ball Tuesday, Thursday. Tax deadline's the fifteenth, so after the fifteenth is awesome for me. That's why I vote the third.
I, I don't think we're, I don't think it's a voting preference. I think it's, are you available?
Yes. All right. So, if anyone, if anyone, what's that?
I'll lay in saying, you know, you're going to get back to them after you finish the quality survey.
Yes, fine. So if anyone goes home, looks at their calendar, thinks about it and says, oh my God, my Girl Scout meeting is on the second Tuesday of every month. I can't do it then. Absolutely. Email me. Let me know.
Girl Scouts is consistent with this meeting hour.
I know. Girl Scouts is on Wednesday. It was just an example.
Right now, there is a conflict.
So move would be good.
Yes.
All right. Six point two, retreat. There is an agenda for the retreat in the, uh, packet. I learned at the CSSU meeting that although the, the topics remain the same, we're going to change the order a little bit. Where the heck did it go?
I have it right here if you want.
Oh, there it is. So the, um, technology integration is going to get moved till right before lunch. So essentially we're going to switch those. So the, um, technology integration is gonna get moved till right before lunch. So essentially, we're gonna switch those two things. But, um, discussion matters. Does anyone have any questions or other issues they want to bring up about the retreat?
The two topics we have for you in the local section.
Yes, that would be helpful to know about.
Long-term plan and enrollment projections, both under facilities.
Long-term plan of third.
I think the building's long-term plan.
Excellent.
I think you had a want to continue the conversation we started with the facilities report.
Great.
And that's it.
Great.
Is there anything else that you'd like though?
Do you want to update a kindergarten member?
That's enrollment.
Yeah, sure.
You're doing the rest of the stuff, the standard stuff.
Yeah. I mean, we have an hour for that, for the facilities and I, I guess my thought when, when I was processing with the lighter is so much is hypothetical. You know, and I, I think that you're gonna have, I didn't even know you were having those conversations, but the conversations you're having will add to the,
Thanks.
with Alex and whoever else. Will, will add so that it's not as hypothetical as I was thinking it was going to be.
Well, it still may be hypothetical.
Right, because one of them isn't gonna happen till after your retreat.
Oh.
The one with the architect is not scheduled until.
So, did we want to have any discussion about budget goals?
Um, I think that's in the, uh, I remember us talking about that. Goals review state, um.
Setting.
Yeah.
We could include budget in that.
I mean, to help give our administrators some time to be thinking prior to the start of our budget.
What do you mean by budget goals? Are you talking of?
Um, well, you know, a few years ago, we said, okay, we're gonna start by reducing by fifty thousand dollars or whatever. Um, and we, you know, things change over time and, but we, in June, had decided what the budget goal was or, or what a goal was.
To, to present, I mean.
It was, it was to give the administrators a sense of what the board's collective thinking was so that the administration had more time to prepare forecasted budgets than showing up at the first budget meeting and saying, whoa, whoa, this is too high. We gotta go much lower.
Am I remembering that this was all part of the challenge to change?
Yeah, it was, well, it might have preceded that. I think it did.
And then we got hit with the challenges for change.
It was, yeah. It was, it was, it was when, it was when Heinsberg was facing a slightly different, uh, uh, set of facts and the budget was increasing exponentially each year and our student enrollment was going down.
Right.
And we were trying to correct that.
The cost per pupil was creeping up.
Well, and facilities might take longer than I anticipated it to. I mean, it might take the whole time, so, but.
Okay, good.
Uh, six point three, communications board corners. I don't know if you saw it, but I did put that letter in the record that appeared in the last issue that came out. Um, unless someone has an idea or a willingness to write one, I think I was just gonna let it be on summer vacation until fall.
Great idea.
I'm not inspired by, I, I don't know what we would want to share.
Yeah.
There's lots of wonderful things happening at the school that you could share and you could focus on, so.
You're right. Yeah, we should be doing that.
Right.
Can we ever get the link for the biking on the front porch forum?
It's linkable now. I, I think it's just that, yeah.
Could you, could you possibly instruct one of the staff to?
Well, what Allegra and I are working on now is, um, we've been inspired by, uh, a local school's Facebook page, and I know we've talked about this before, but we're, we're building capacity in the school so that there's, there's quite a few updates and, and, and putting that link on could just be this, this person that we're allocating to, to keep the community informed on a much more regular basis of the, of the great things that are happening in the school, so
I think we, right.
we'll put that in our tickler.
Okay, please, because I think it's a lot of value for people who don't have kids in school to get the,
To just have access.
Yeah, to click on it, you know, if they can click on it, it's easy for them. They might click on it and see what's going on.
Yep.
Thank you.
So with the board corner, would it be the record or the citizen or?
Could be either.
Did you, you said you submitted a letter and that was?
I submitted it to the record for two reasons. Because the citizen has circulation in Charlotte and I didn't think that this necessarily needed to.
Yeah, it was a Heinsberg thing.
It was a Heinsberg thing. And it, it was a thank you to the community for supporting our budget, which obviously we wanted to timely thank them, but it wasn't urgent to get it out within a week.
Okay. Let me look at some deadlines and I might think about something and then get back to everybody. Depends on some other deadlines I've got, but.
Okay. Uh, seven point O, we have two action matters. Seven point one, adopt, uh, next year's school year calendar. We did something last month.
We looked at it.
I think they're common days.
Was it looking at this one or did we, we adopted a regional calendar a couple months ago? All right. So, so we looked at this last year and now I guess we're being asked to adopt it. So I will entertain a motion to adopt the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year calendar.
Second motion.
Well, we need a motion first.
I thought you, I thought you made the motion.
Oh, I can't, I can't do that, Bill.
I'll make a motion to adapt the, uh, two thousand fourteen, fifteen calendar.
Thank you, Bill. Or do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion?
Is this the same calendar that we saw the last meeting or have there been changes?
This is the one in your packet with the K eight professional development days assigned. So it's the, it's the final calendar.
I don't think there were any changes though, Stacy.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to remember.
The changes where the professional development days are in, but the green days seem to be pretty much the same. Right, because the green days we have to have.
Yes, the green days are fixed prior to.
Right.
All right. Are we ready for the question?
I guess the only, the only thing that I would notice is that the professional development days and the parent teacher conferences both printed out as blue, so it doesn't.
No, but it, it tells you underneath what is what.
That's, she's so smart.
Yeah, she actually reads the instructions.
They color coded for me.
Although, fine, as long as we're nitpicking the record, I'll point out what Elaine pointed out at the SU meeting. January second, underneath it says no school. That's actually not correct. That is a professional development day. It is a non-student day.
There was another draft. Right. There is another draft that came around that has that in. You're right.
Oh, that's what I've got here. Mine says correctly.
Yeah, that came around.
Right. Doesn't say no schools. There's no students.
All right. Are you ready for the question?
It'd be so much easier to get work done if the kids were not around, huh?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions. Thank you. The motion carries. Seven point two, authorize signature authority for summer action.
I'd like to authorize our board chair to sign on behalf of the board during summer session to be ratified at our first fall meeting.
Thank you, Colleen, for that motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, Stacy. Any discussion questions? Explanation for our new board member, maybe?
I would love an explanation.
So basically, and correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong or I don't elaborate enough. Basically, um, things move quickly in the summer, particularly with respect to hiring, and sometimes we need to make decisions quicker than calling an all-board meeting either time-wise or because people scatter to the winds. So we authorize the board chair to execute contracts, among other things, for stuff that happens in the summer that we then revisit and ratify, uh, at our first board meeting in the fall. I will tell you.
Typically, like be a, a hire at the, you know, July first or something.
I will, I will tell you that, uh, you know, I am a prudent person, so I'm not gonna do something if I feel like you guys would question it later.
It's usually very few.
It's, as we learn in law school, we learn this big word. It's a prophylactic device in order to make sure that we are prepared. See? See? I told you, these are big words we learned in law school.
I even, I might not be able to read, but I can hear.
Just making sure you're listening.
Yeah, exactly.
Did we vote?
No, we haven't voted yet. So are you ready to vote?
Ready.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, eight point O, consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the items on the, so the, uh, the consent agenda.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. All those in, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Nine point O, director's comments.
Thank you.
Nothing? Thanks? All right. Stacy?
No.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess the only thing I will say is, uh, yes, we should celebrate all the things that are going on at school. As I've been telling people, this is the busiest seven weeks of the year.
Right.
Between the end of April vacation and graduation with all the things going on. But the important dates, at least one important date is Thursday, June twelve, eighth grade graduation. Anything else that the board or our public should be aware of in terms of big school events?
Kai has that fundraiser thing they're doing, the hike.
June first, right?
I don't remember the date, but it's, I think it's coming up.
It's Sunday, I think it's Sunday, June first, starting from eleven to one. I don't really know where they're hiking, but I know they're coming back to school.
It's right near the school, I think. It's those trails.
Right. It was a trail. I just don't know the trail.
Yeah, I don't either.
So field day K five is, uh, June sixth.
Six.
Uh, that's a Friday. Uh, the middle school will be taking their trip. Uh, so six, eight will be out of the building and that works really well. We've done that the last couple of years. So the field day is primarily the, the elementary and, uh, and then the eighth graders for the first year in my tenure, uh, were gonna be doing, uh, sleepover on, on the, uh, the sixth as well, when they get back from their trip. So, uh, they've, they've invited all board members to be part of that.
Especially Keith. Didn't they say that? We really want Mr. Roberts. So, yes, the board chair.
Maybe, maybe. Yeah, we're, we're working, we're working. Those are the finer details, but we're, I would love to have it outside in tents, but you know, the, the supervision, so I gotta, I gotta keep all of that in, in the purview, but.
I'm sort of remembering that happening before.
Yeah, so.
June twenty first is Heinsberg Community School Night at the Lake Monsters Baseball?
Yep.
That would be a wonderful time.
That would be a wonderful opportunity to watch a baseball game. You don't need to have any connection with the school. If you want tickets, we can arrange them for you.
What time's graduation?
Great question. It's, it's six, I believe, but.
I have five.
You know, I might have five on my calendar.
I think in the principal's report, I wrote five, so.
Oh, I could, I could look in my calendar, too, so.
Are you going?
Yes, I am going. All board members are invited and encouraged if you are able to come.
We sit, um, towards the stage. There's a spot right up.
I have to give a little speech.
You sit with faculty.
I wasn't invited last year, so.
You were?
Yeah.
I have graduation as June twelfth.
Oh, people probably just assumed.
I need, I need.
People probably just assumed you knew. Yeah.
What time is it? Do you have five?
Yeah, come.
I have it on June twelfth.
It is June twelfth. You don't have what time? Okay.
In the gym, could you guys just?
Mine says five.
Yeah.
Could you guys, can you, can you invite some kind of email by just to confirm that so I can be sure to put it in my calendar? Thank you.
You're saying what, five o'clock?
That's what they're saying, but.
I gotta put it in here now, otherwise I'm gonna get in trouble.
All right. Ten point O, next meeting dates. We've talked about important school events in terms of meetings. We have our retreat on May thirtieth. Um, and then we have a business meeting on June twenty fifth.
What's that until?
I'm not gonna be here.
The business meeting?
Yeah.
Uh, it's, uh, end of the year's things that you need to sign, like tech, tax anticipation notes. Uh, that's the one I can think of. You don't do buses, so you don't need to do that.
I probably shouldn't draft that one.
You need a quorum. Cause you're gonna, the group's gonna meet together and hear similar topics on stuff that you do at the end of the year and then you break and it's a thirty-minute meeting unless someone chooses to add something to the agenda. Against my better wishes. I can take that back if you signed it.
Uh, does the clerk need to sign it?
Oh, Stacy's the clerk.
Stacy's the clerk.
And what time is that? Sorry.
Yes, Stacy needs to sign it.
Uh, June twenty fifth, business meeting.
Oh.
Five forty.
Five thirty at C V U. Is this room one six, that one sixty? That must be your.
Yeah, we meet all together in the same room and then you quickly take care of business and we get you out of Dodge. Before you leave Dodge, could I ask you some questions? I'm supposed to record motions in seconds and I'm a little distracted when you quickly move through the business portion of your agenda. Who, who, yeah. I'm, I'm gonna lose my generous stipend as a result of poor performance. Who might have motioned and seconded the calendar?
I think Bill motioned and, and Colleen seconded.
Who might have motioned and seconded summer signature authority?
Colleen and Stacy seconded.
And who wants to take credit for the consent agenda motion in second? Bill?
And Colleen, I think.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now you may leave.
All right. Um, we have, we have an executive session on the agenda, but I'm not hearing a, a, uh, a push for it. Nope, okay. With that then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, Bill. All those in favor? Awesome. We are adjourned.